Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the High River Regular Council Meeting for Monday, June 8th. Our mayor is unable to be with us today, so I will be chairing the meeting, and I am Councillor Kinghorn. I remind everybody that unless you're speaking, to please mute your mics, and remember that we all are on camera. So, I will call the meeting to order at 3:00 PM. And our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented from Councillor Kui?
I will give you that motion, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn.
Thank you, councillor, all in favor? Sorry, let me back up a little bit. We are going to do this on a negative basis, so if you're against the motion, please raise your hand, otherwise the motion will be considered carried. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Next item is the adoption of the minutes. The minutes are for the special meeting of council, May 25th, as presented in your agenda package. May I have a motion to accept those minutes, please, from Councillor McMillan?
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you, councillor, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Excuse me for a moment, Kent, I don't have Councillor Masterman in the meeting.
Deputy Mayor, he just emailed me, I'm trying to get him into the meeting right now, so he was, I think he's here now.
Okay, there we go. Welcome, Bruce. Item four, we're at item four of the agenda? Item four, any public comments?
Item four? Well, you guys are fast.
So, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and council, there are no public comments that have been received to date.
Excellent, thank you. New business, sorry, business 5.1. This item is 2019 year-end audited financial statements. Cola, you're the lead on this?
Yes. Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and council. I have with me this afternoon Calvin Scott, who is the audit partner from our external auditors, Avail LLP, Chartered Professional Accountants, to present their independent audit report on our 2019 audited financial statement. This is a statutory requirement by all municipalities in Alba under Section 276 of the MGA to publish their audited financial statement for public access and to submit to the province not later than May 1st every year. However, due to COVID-19, this deadline has now been extended to October 1st, 2020. Administration is responsible for the preparation of the annual financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles for municipal government stipulated by the Public Sector Accounting Standards Board and generally acceptable accounting principles, GAAP, while the auditors are expected to audit the financial statements and provide their independent opinions, council. Avail LLP has now completed their audit, and I will therefore pass on to Calvin to present their 2019 audited financial statement report to Mayor and council for adoption. Over to you, Cal.
Thank you very much, Cola. Hello to everybody, thank you again for having me. I will run through the statements in a little different fashion than you're used to, I've provided a summary for you this year. We're a little later than usual, we're well into the next year already. I've gone through and just put the numbers into a graphical format for you, so you can kind of see some charts depicting the changes from this year to last year. I'll run through the report, and then subsequently, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it. The two things I'll be going through are just the summary package, revenue and expenditures, the statement of operations, and financial position, and then I'll run through the municipal indicators or the key performance indicators. Everything's in good news this year, so it's wonderful to see. So I'll be quick for you, hopefully I'm understandable, I'll share my screen with Ken, get on to it. So hopefully, everybody can see that.
Yes.
Perfect. So during the year this year, revenues, we'll start with the statement of operations, we can see that revenues decreased a significant amount, so we're looking at about $11.8 million. As you can see by the graph, the major thing that changed here is going to be government transfers for capital. So government transfers for capital decreased by about $11.4 million from last year. So although there were still projects going on, the major decrease would have been in relation to disaster recovery programs, DRP funding. This is revenues coming in from deferred revenue being recognized for expenditures in prior periods that were finally approved. So we're finally getting to the end of a long five-year period of programs that had happened or expenses that have been incurred, and the revenues are finally coming in, the programs are being approved this way. So this year, a decrease of 11.4, still a little bit of funding going on, but we're almost at the end of it. User fees and sale of goods increased by about $370,000 this year, and that's mainly due to increased water usage during the year. Off-site levies decreased by about $786,000 this year, with no new developments occurring, and this also affected the license and permits by decreasing $210,000 with less construction occurring. Donation revenue was down about $820 from last year, there were some large one-time donations in the prior year, Red Cross for about $386,000, United Way was $200,000, and about $174 for the Canada 150 Trail System. Contributed assets increased this year as a result of the airport runways and taxiways. So an overall basis, a decrease in revenues, but still solid revenue position. The expenditures this year, we can see some big changes in there. On an overall basis, there was an increase of about $70,000, so not a significant change on the expense side whatsoever. We can see that administrative expenses increased by about $1.8 million. This is mainly due to the disposal, or the loss on disposal of the sprung office building. There was also some increase in grants from other organizations in here. The disaster and emergency measures expense decreased by about $1 million, and this is a reduction of DRP-approved projects. So the prior year had some flood mitigation contract work going on that didn't happen this year. Wastewater treatment and disposal expenses increased by about $430,000, and this relates primarily to amortization, which is a non-cash expense, so it wasn't an actual cash increase, a non-cash increase. As the wastewater assets that have been added over the last few years are on the books, they start getting amortized, and this is increasing that non-cash expense. Economic development expenses decreased by about $350,000. You're going to see reduced advertising, decreased WCB, and a reduction in wages due to the resignation of the manager of economic development. And parks and rec saw expenditures decreased by about $425. There were some salary decreases, as well as some amortization decreases here. On an overall basis, this leaves the town with a surplus of about $13.9 million. Now, that surplus is going to include capital revenues, it's also going to include amortization, loss on gain, like we spoke of. The things it doesn't include are going to be the capital expenditures. So we have revenues coming in, but we're not showing the expenditures that are being spent for capital. We're not showing any repayments of debt, nor are we showing any transfers to or from reserves. So there's just significant changes that come in. The surplus also relates to the DRP funding that came in this year for approved projects that happened in prior years, so those were already funded through regular operations, and now the money is coming in to replenish those operating funds, thus the large surplus this year. So overall, a good, healthy surplus to cover prior year expenditures, which is great to see, we knew it was coming, and finally, those funds are being recognized, the projects are being approved. So now we see the financial position, which is the good story for the town. Financial assets increased by about $5.2 million, so as a result of receiving prior year's receivables and a surplus, there's going to be some increased cash and investment balances. Liabilities decreased by about $11.5 million, so this is disaster recovery program funds that had come in in past years that are now being recognized to the income statement. They're originally shown as debt or deferred revenue, and now they have been recognized, they're no longer there showing as liability. There's also been a decrease in capital payables with less capital activity going on, and debt's being repaid rather quickly, so we'll see decreases on all the liability side. So these above changes have resulted in an increase in financial assets of about $16.7 million. It was only a few years ago that the town was sitting in a net debt position, and now we're at a net financial asset position, so the recovery from floods of prior years is finally coming to a point where we're back on the right side, and it's great to see. The revenues have come in to support those projects, and the town's looking in much better financial state than it was years ago. The other item on the statement of financial position would be the non-financial assets, and so this is going to consist of prepaid expenses, inventory, and tangible capital assets. During the year, there's about $5.9 million of tangible capital asset additions, and most of this is still work in progress at this point in time, so underway currently. There was about $2.7 million spent on the southwest infrastructure and repairs, that's phases four and five. It's about $510,000 on various road projects, so some repaving, shallow utilities. There's about 761 of sewer work being done, 216 was spent on the new fire hall as of the year-end, and about $408,000 on a road floodgate. So overall, there was a surplus increase of about $14 million, and once again, coming from the recognition of those previous flood mitigation and DRP funds, which has led the town to be in a very healthy position when it comes to financial indicators, which we'll get into shortly, to see where we're at. Impressively, we're back into a position of having a unrestricted net surplus as opposed to net debt, which we have had, or a deficit which we've had for the last five years, so it's very much a turnaround year for the town in showing positive numbers on an overall basis, and showing that we finally recovered financially from the floods of prior days. So that's the quick, brief summary of the financial statements for you. Are there any questions on those?
Thank you, Calvin, I've heard, I think, about eight or nine of these from you, and that had to be the quickest one and the most positive one I've heard. I'll turn it over to council, questions from council? Come on, Bruce. Hearing no questions from council, Chris, do you have any comments to make?
Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, no, no comments to make, but I do see some hands popping up.
Yeah, I just saw that, no. Councillor Kui?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. Calvin, just thank you very much for the presentation, and in particular, in these unique circumstances. I'm not going to be able to go back in my funnies, but you noted something about note 26, and that you couldn't really provide an opinion, I know it's something flood-related, can you just explain that?
Yes, so we have added a note to all of our December financial statements, and this is regards to a COVID-19 note. So that note would just say that we were in the midst of a pandemic, and we're uncertain as far as what effects that will have on the municipality as a whole and going on to the future. So that was simply to bring your attention to the fact that we have a note in there that states it's uncertain times, and we're uncertain of what effect it will have on your municipality.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation.
You bet.
I think I have another comment from Cola.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Calvin, Councillor Masterman actually asked about this question earlier, which I would like you to respond. Your package, you called it council exit package. So council is wondering why exit package?
Yes, it's not the first time I've had that question. Our internal accounting speak, anytime we meet with a board or council or clients, we call it an exit meeting. So generally, we refer to it as the final, the final meeting going on within that engagement, so I've called it that, but generally, I have changed it in some other instances to an audit summary or anything of the sort, so I'm using our internal accounting speak, and it's confusing people, so I understand where you're coming from with that one. I'll make sure to change the name of it next year, so it's a little bit more logical for you.
Thank you.
Councillor McMillan?
Thank you, and thank you very much, Calvin, for your presentation. Because I don't have two screens, I'm not sure if my questions are jumping ahead, but on the consolidated statement of change in net financial assets, I'm just wondering, underneath net financial assets, end of year, why the big difference? Because it was $2,454,760 budget, but in 2019, actually, $19,231,798, so I'm just kind of curious about that.
So the funding that comes in from the recognition of deferred revenue, so in prior years, there was a significant amount of the DRP funding that had been received, but the program expenditures had yet to be approved. So the revenues have come in, years ago, those expenditures had been put into tangible capital assets, it was a matter of time before the actual projects get approved, so the cash is in, once that comes out, those revenues get recognized, but that's never budgeted on a regular basis, so you're not going to budget for revenues that have already come in, that are sitting in deferred revenue, coming into revenue on a regular, on an annual basis. So that's why there's going to be a significant difference for this year in comparison to budget, because those revenues had already been received, and the amounts had already been spent, it's just more of a matching them up in the current year to finally get the expenditures approved and those revenues out of deferred revenue and into your bank account essentially for your own use.
Okay, perfect, thank you, and I do have another question.
You bet.
On, well, it was on page 37 of our package, but it's the schedule to the consolidated financial statements, where revenue is $34,206,000, et cetera, and expenses are $36,574. So I'm just, I'm always kind of curious, when I don't see kind of like a, like a net zero there, like with expenses being more than...
Yes.
Assets, yes.
So the wonderful thing about these public sector accounting statements is that they include, the statement you're referring to includes non-cash items, so the expenditures themselves at $36 million will include $7 million of amortization, which is just a depreciating assets over time. So that's a non-cash expense, which is actually putting this into what looks like an operating deficit, but really is not, because it's not cash, which is one reason I try to just explain it in a different manner than going through the statements, because it gives such a distorted picture of what's actually there. So really, if you were to withdraw the non-cash expense or remove it, the $7 million, you're going to have a much different $5 million surplus shown there if you were to take out the capital items.
Perfect, thank you, and then one more question, well, it's more of a comment, Calvin. I love the post-audit letter, bullet number three, where I appreciate the note about the translation regarding town being a going concern, actually meaning that the town has the resources to continue operating indefinitely, because I had a good chuckle at that, when the town going concerns, so thanks for that.
My first two meanings, I got questioned on what does that actually mean for some of the...
Exactly.
So I added that to make sure it wasn't new.
Perfect, thank you very much, Calvin.
You bet.
Any more questions from council? Hearing none, I'll read the motion. The motion is, be it resolved that council authorize the audited financial statements as presented by Avail LLP for the year ended December 31st, 2019, and publish on the town's website and social media platforms for public access. And I'm going to ask Councillor Masterman for that motion.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, I'm happy to make that motion.
Thank you, councillor, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried, thank you. Thanks, Calvin, appreciate it, look forward to next year.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
I might be able to shake your hands then.
Yes, I look forward to those days.
Excellent. So next up on the agenda is item 5.2, titled Homestead Trailer Park Access Sewer Bill for November/December 2019. My understanding is, Cola, you're going to speak to this?
Yes.
Cola, Kim, sorry, Cola, your camera is showing a very nicely painted wall.
Oh, sorry for that.
There we go. Thanks, Cola.
I forgot to open my laptop, so...
No problem, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and council. I'm here to present the reports on excess sewer bill for November/December 2019 reduction from Homestead Trailer Park. The manager for the Homestead Trailer Park, Mr. Jim Jenkins, made a delegation to council during February 24, 2020, regular council meeting, where he requested for a reduction on the sanitary sewer bill portion of $13,641 on November/December bill. The actual bill for November/December was $21,070. He was requesting for a reduction to $7,430 based on prior periods' average. Council then directed administration to review the request and present a report back to council. We have now reviewed, and during the process of review, we noticed, we actually noticed a significant increase in their water consumption during November/December billing period, which resulted to increased sewer billing based on water consumption. This significant water consumption was due to a leak at one of their properties in the park. This was also confirmed by Jim during his presentation. Homestead Park is expected to identify the source of the leak, and they are expected to fix the leak to prevent excess billing, just like any other property owners in the town. As a result of the leak, the council approved water abnormalist policy can be applied, because this leak is not a regular occurring event. So the policy can be applied in this instance, as a one-time write-off within two-year period, as stated in the policy, which means this policy can only be applied once within two years. However, I want to mention to council that this leak is yet to be fixed, even as at April, and this has also resulted to significant billing of $43,605 only on sewer portion from these two billing periods, January, February, and March, April, although the manager has not come forward for a request of any reduction. Administration is here by recommending the approval of the write-off in the amount of $13,641 on November/December 2019 sewer billing, as requested, and would like council to provide us the administration direction on January, February, and March, April billing. So that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Cola, I'm looking at council for questions. Councilman Masterman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. Cola, thank you for that report. So I guess I have a question, but first I have a bit of a comment. I'm having trouble with this one. The policy statement does clearly say that we can adjust a bill if it's higher for abnormal or unexplained reasons. This isn't abnormal, and this isn't unexplained, it's leaky pipes that they didn't fix in time, even though they may fix it now. My question is, Cola, and I do recall some discussion around this at the time of his presentation back in February, I believe this was not the first time this has happened over the years, is that correct, Cola?
Yes, you are right, this is not the first time, but this is the major significant one over years. In the last, in the last five years, it has never been this high.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I just think, you know, we, you know, we have to, we have to make a point at some point to our residents and our businesses, that the water is a precious commodity, it's not something that we just kind of throw around, and if a company is not fixing leaks in a timely fashion that they're aware of, and then they come to us and ask our taxpayers to cover their mistake, I just, there's no way I'm supporting this, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilman Masterman, next up is Councilman Moore.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, sir, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Cola.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, just to reconfirm the request, the request is only on the sewer portion. The water billing, the water portion on the bill, they've admitted they are going to pay that, they are not contesting it, is only the sewer portion, because our sewer bill is based on water, and his own point was that the excess water did not go into our water system, into our sewer system, so he's looking for reduction only on the sewer portion.
Okay, thanks. I'll go back to Council Masterman, are you good now?
I'm not sure about good, but I appreciate that clarification very much, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Moore, you're next up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. I was going to make that same comment about the way our water billing and our sewer billing is made, is that the amount of water that you consumed goes into adding to your sewer consumption, and we make an exception for people that water their lawns and stuff in the winter, in the summer months, based on their winter water consumption, because that water that they're using for their lawns, et cetera, is not going into our sewer system. And this is kind of like the same thing, that there is actually not, they paid for the water, and the amount is only a fictitious amount that helps us to figure out our sewer charges, so everybody pays a fixed base sewer price, but it's added to by the amount of water that's consumed. I'm not opposed to this motion that is coming up, but I don't want it to be a constant continuing thing because of their irresponsibility for not fixing their pipes, they have to make an advance investment at some point in time to do the repairs that are necessary, so that they don't have to keep coming back to council for forgiveness of that fictitious water usage amount. So it's, I think it's okay as far as I'm concerned, for, in my mind, for our water and sewer billing process, but it doesn't advocate the responsibility of the homeowners or the, it's the mobile home park to do the repairs that are necessary.
Thank you, Councilman Moore, Kathy Kui, Councillor Kui, sorry, Councillor Kui, you're up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. Thanks for both Cola and Dawn's explanation, I can certainly wrap my head around it, I just want to be clear, though, Cola... I can certainly wrap my head around it. I just want to be clear, though, Cola, on a couple of things. Um, I believe it says that they can now not come back to us in this year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So they cannot come back to us for January, February, March, or April's sewer billing?
Yes, they cannot.
They cannot come back to us. Um, is there anything, and maybe you don't, because I, because I, I too have the, the concern that why aren't they fixing it? The, the ground is, you know, I, I can appreciate maybe not in January, February. The ground is now thawed, making it less expensive, and, and I have a huge concern with using up that much water. Do we as municipality have any recourse to, um, encouraging them to, to fix this issue?
I would defer that to Riley. Riley, you want to attend that?
Sure, um. Oh, uh, I'm just trying to remember what we have in the water bylaw. The billing would be the, the immediate penalty is that they're actually going to get billed for everything they leak. Uh, so there is an immediate financial penalty. Um, I know, and, and I don't know if this, I shouldn't say this at all because now I'm speculating, but when we are dealing with single-family homes, we do have the option of turning water off if there is a leak that needs to be addressed. Uh, and so we can go through a notification process that says, um, please submit schedules or something like that, and please repair it. And if they don't comply, we can get to a point where we actually turn off the water. I'm not sure if that would apply into this because it's actually a fairly large, uh, development. And the person who's causing the issue may not be the same person who's responsible for the bill. So that does complicate it quite a bit, and something if we wanted to pursue, we would have to investigate.
Thank you, Riley. Thanks, Cola.
I didn't really give you an answer there, Kathy.
No, that's fine. It was, it, it, it's kind of one of those questions that maybe didn't have the information for. No, it's good. Thank you.
Well, Riley, I'd like to ask you to undertake that, to look into that for, uh, our next council meeting, I guess, maybe, or the one after, to see if we can do anything, because in the spirit of of water conservation alone, we put all these conservation measures in place throughout the community, and here we know of a significant leak, and we're just letting it happen. So, um, Counselor McMillan, you're up next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, and thank you, Cola, for your presentation. Um, I'm in alignment with Counselor Moore. Um, I appreciate what, uh, Counselor Moore said because in principle, I think that the write-off is in line with the water utility billing anomalies policy. But the one thing that I would like to see added to this policy is where I still kind of shake my head is, uh, I think we as a municipality, as well as the trailer, uh, park owner, manager, we both have obligations to observe when there's these discrepancies. Because to me, I think just about in our own life, when you see such a huge discrepancy in your billing, you don't just sit on it. So I would like to see something added to the policy that is getting flagged, not only because we can appreciate that sometimes people just let things leak, but as far as our obligation to our citizens as the municipality, that when we notice such a discrepancy, I think we should be following through, uh, where it builds up to such astronomical numbers.
Thank you, Karen, Counselor McMillan. Counselor Nychuk, you have the final word on this item?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm gonna question this bit about ghost sewer volume. Um, in the background report, it says that a local company, there was an investigation, found a sump pump at the location installed by blah, 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 discharging into the sanitary sewer system. So the water's going into the sanitary sewer system by what this report says. Can somebody confirm that for me?
Yes, from the, from the investigation, part of the water was going into the sanitary system, but the volume is, it was difficult to measure.
So, so we, we know that some was going into the sanitary sewer system. So this isn't like Counselor Moore mentioning watering a lawn. This isn't going just into the ground. There is an actual sump pump hooked up into the sanitary system. So there's a volume of water going into the sanitary system, which has a cost associated. If volume goes into that system, we process it, and there's a cost to processing. So I'm just trying to get an understanding here of, of actual cost of this to the community, because going back to Counselor Masterman, um, I don't think there's any freebies entitled, um, to something like this. Uh, I don't want to put the burden of the cost on the rest of the taxpayers if there's a cost to doing it. I can appreciate there being something unfortunate happening and and a period of time being allowed to rectify that and some relaxation given to it, but further to the sump pump thing, I don't think you can hook a sump to the sanitary system, can you? I didn't think that was legal. If you're, if Dawn has his hand up, maybe Dawn can clarify that.
I see that, but, uh, first to Cola. Cola, so we don't have the answer for Michael then when he's asking about?
We do. I have, I have the answer. If, if you look at the report under the background, you will see the estimated volume of one ninety-one cubic meters, which costs about three hundred and sixty dollars. So, and because he's already paying for the excess water, uh, in excess of about twenty thousand dollars. So if we are saying, okay, three sixty dollars, then because that volume going to the, uh, sewer system is so insignificant compared with the, the bill on the water, is already paying twenty-something thousand, which is not contested. So we decided to forego the three hundred and sixty dollars.
Thank you, Claire, for clarification, Cola. Uh, Counselor Moore, you had raised your hand.
Thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. Um, yes, and the, um, uh, just a further comment is that we have a step water billing system, so the larger volume that you consume, the higher percentage price-wise, it, it goes up. So you're paying a lot more for excess volume of water used, um, than than the normal resident of Spain. They've stayed within that limit. So, um, they've already paid substantially more for the water that they've consumed, and there, they didn't contest that, um, even though it was a leak and not really used. So, um, on the other end, my understanding from their presentation, uh, because they had said that it was going into the storm, stormwater system and, and, um, leaking in the area into the ground, and that there was very, as Cola just confirmed, a very small amount that may have gone into the sanitary system through the sump pump process, however, and, and we told them that that was not a legal procedure to do that. Um, they've said that the sump pump didn't even operate during that time. So, um, that's where I got my conclusion from is that it was, as Cola said, a very insignificant amount that may have gone into the sanitary sewer system. So I, I will be most, I went into account in that area.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Um, does the CIO have any additional comments?
Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, not at this time. I think all the facts are there, and, uh, council, we brought this back at the direction of council from the previous meeting of January, um, with this resolutions.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the, uh, the, the resolution and look for a be it resolved that council authorized the reduction to the utility payment for Homestead Acres Mobile Home Park by thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-one forty-five, representing the sewer consumption portion of invoice nine six six three zero nine. I'll ask Counselor Moore for that motion, please.
Yes, um, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, uh, I will make that motion, and I uh, would like to make a comment that the only reason that I'm making the motion and will be voting in favor of it is if this does not happen again. In other words, picture pipes, or you're not gonna get it resolved again.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. So, all of those opposed? To oppose, the motion is carried. Rising out of that discussion, we need another resolution. And that resolution is that we direct administration to look into the current bylaws to determine, uh, I'm looking for the right verbiage, um, to determine what actions the town can take on, uh, it's a call it a community. I don't want to isolate it as a particular trailer court, but on a Riley, help me out. What would we call that area, please?
Um, I don't know if it's under a condo or not, Jamie. Like, it would be, there's areas where there's common property, which I think is the confusion.
Okay, so can we go a little more vague? I just want to give you a resolution so that you can look into the bylaw and and look and see what we can do.
Why don't you go more vague and just say, uh, direct, direct administration to look into, um, conditions for terminating a water service? Or turning, discontinuing a water service or something like that in the event of?
We have that condition for residents, right? For individual homes and, of course, commercial properties? This is a separate?
Yes, and I'm actually reading it right now, and it's fairly vague, but there's also separate sections when it starts talking about renters in terms of requirements about that. So it is something we'll have to look into in a bit more detail. It is very clear when it comes to residential properties, we can turn it off if there's a leak. Um, but then it, it confuses it with renters, so, uh, and I'm sure there's renters in that property that we'll have to consider.
You have a clear understanding what we're looking for?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Can I ask for that motion from Counselor Nychuk?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, I'll make that motion for you.
Thank you. Opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Thank you, council. Onto item five point three. Uh, lease a municipal land, specifically the Westerly Four Acres, south of the egg grounds. Um, just, council should be aware, this is that piece of property that we leased to River City Classics to put the drive-in on. We own there the old, uh, airport strip. Jody will be leading this discussion. Welcome, Jody.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Deputy Mayor Kinghorn and the rest of council. Nice to see you, although under unique circumstances today. Um, as Deputy Mayor Kinghorn mentioned, uh, last year, almost to the day, council provided direction to enter into a lease agreement for the Westerly Four Acres of the municipal lands, commonly known as the former airstrip lands. These are directly south of the High River Agricultural Society lands. And the purpose of the lease was for a drive-in theater that the River City Classics Car Club was leading. Uh, the lease between the town and the River City Classics and Eman's Garage Historical Society, which this name is the official name once the River City Classics Car Club became, um, a recognized society. And that was executed in October of two thousand and nineteen. Since then, a community group related to the River City Classics has developed a, a separate group to oversee and manage the drive-in theater, and the name of this group is the High River Sunset Drive-In Society. And this group would like to directly hold the lease with the town to facilitate a transfer, um, where it wouldn't technically be a transfer. We would terminate the original lease and execute a new lease on the same terms and conditions, however, just naming that High River Sunset Drive-In Association. Um, so administration recommends that council support the termination of the lease with the River City Classics and Eman's Garage Historical Society and authorize the execution of a new lease on the same terms and conditions with the High River Sunset Drive-In, uh, Association. Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Thanks, Jody. I have a question from Carol McMillan first. Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you very much, Jody. Um, one thing I did notice is on the, um, on page fifty-nine, on the sixth part of the recommendation, it states that the High River Sunset Drive-In has the option to renew for an additional five years at a cost of one dollars annually. But then on page six of their actual lease agreement, um, under clause number three, rent three point one, it says the society shall pay to the town as rent the sum of ten dollars per year, payable on or before June fifteenth of each calendar year during a determiner renewal term, together with other such amounts due and payable. So I just would like some clarification. Is it a dollar or ten dollars?
My apologies there. Um, typically, we were using a dollar per year, but nowadays, a dollar really doesn't have much value, so we have been looking at changing that to ten dollars. So that is an inconsistent piece on my end. Um, I will have to double-check. It would actually match the lease. So if the lease says ten dollars, I will need to update the resolution to match.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Jody, because I wasn't sure if it was just a case of after their five years, it was going back to be a dollar. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, I appreciate you catching that. Thank you.
Always, Carol. Counselor Masterman? Councilman Masterman, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. Uh, Jody, thanks so much. Um, I just, um, a couple of quick questions, uh, and I'll ask them both, and, uh, then you can, uh, then I'll, I'll shut up, but, uh, is the, is the association a, a nonprofit, uh, organization? I, I, I don't really have a sense of that, and maybe it said that in there, and if it did, I apologize. I have another question I'll ask after that.
Okay, um, as far as my understanding, it is still going to be a nonprofit association. They are not looking to get the same, uh, society status. They would like to remain as a, uh, association rather than have that formal status. Um, I believe they're still operating under the same premise that it will be a fundraising drive-in theater and that, uh, it'll be an opportunity for local groups that could also rent the drive-in and then use it as a fundraiser for them, uh, and their team or group, whatever type of, uh, organization they are.
Maybe I can help counsel out on this. Um, Jeff Langford has informed me that they are a registered nonprofit.
Okay, that would have been good to know. Thank you. It is good to know.
Excellent.
And my, I have one other question, uh, if I can, Deputy Mayor. Um, the, um, Jody, I'm just, I'm just wondering, uh, if, 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 if the, if the worst should ever happen and the association has to walk away from the lease or the project, um, are we adequately High River adequately protected? I, I did read section seven that has several, uh, subsections in it that, that, that seem to protect us. I guess I would just like to get your thoughts on whether you think that, uh, if, if, you know, the worst should happen, um, whether we're adequately protected from anything that, that, any of the fallout that would happen?
So we can never fully predict and protect, uh, protect us from everything. Um, as you mentioned, there are some conditions in the agreement that indicate they are to remove any of their improvements. So they are constructing a, a screen and some fencing and that. So it is in the lease agreement that they are to remove any of those improvements at the end of the term. Um, whether that be the initial term or the renewal term. And if not, those improvements become property of the town. So whether those would be considered a true asset with value to the town um, is up for discussion. Um, if there was anything that, um, Um, is up for discussion. Um, if there was anything that um. That wasn't to our or to the town's um standards. We could go back to the the association and ask them to do those improvements. Or repair and remove those improvements. Um, so we do have the wording in there.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Are there any further questions from council? Seeing none, okay, the motion is is fairly clear here. It reads at a cost of one dollar annually. Um, should we set that at ten, Jody?
Yes, please. If you can make that change on the fly, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, the motion isn't on the table at the moment, so I'm sure we can. So I will read, it's a rather lengthy motion, but I'll read it out. Be it resolved that council direct administration to terminate the lease of the Westerly Four Acres. With the River City Classics and Eman's Garage Historical Society. On a mutually agreed upon date with the River City Classics and Eman's Garage Historical Society. And that council authorize administration to execute a lease with the High River Sunset Drive-In Association. For the Westerly Four Acres with the first term of five years expiring on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And one option to renew for additional five years at a cost of ten dollars annually. I'll ask for that motion from councillor Cooley, please.
I'm happy to give you that motion, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Jody. Well done. Next up, we have item five point four. Request to schedule a public hearing for bylaw four five seven three dash twenty twenty. Close the laneway directly adjacent to the fire hall at ten ten Fifth Street Southeast. And Sarah's presenting on that one, I understand. Sarah?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Councillors, uh, yes. So the purpose of this item is to request that a public hearing for a laneway closure be scheduled. It has been determined that the town's fire hall was partially built on an unopened laneway. That land, like all laneways and roadways, is owned by the province. The town would, at this time, like to build an addition onto the fire hall, which would also be partially on that laneway. It is critical that the town own all of the land that the fire hall occupies. The first reading for this bylaw was held on March ninth of twenty twenty. The public hearing was originally scheduled for April fourteenth. However, that meeting was canceled uh due to COVID nineteen social distancing precautions. Um, the town is now able to hold um public meetings as the MGA has been amended to allow for electronic meetings. Uh, landowners and as utility companies have already been circulated. None of the adjacent landowners had any comments or concerns. Uh, we've determined that Portis and Tellus both require um utility rights of way. Um, town administration is satisfied with the Portis agreement and we are still continuing to work with Tellus. On their agreement. Administration is recommending that the public hearing be scheduled. For July thirteenth um as a virtual meeting. Are there any questions or um clarification required?
Thank you for that clear presentation. Sarah, any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for the motion. Be it resolved that council direct administration to schedule a public hearing for public. Uh, or sorry, for bylaw number four five seven three two zero two zero for July thirteenth, twenty twenty at three P M. Councillor McMillan?
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you. All those opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Item six. You too. Take care. Item six on the agenda. Council correspondence requiring action. Uh, six point one filming in Alberta. Keep Alberta rolling. Um, basically, it's asking us to endorse a a letter. Um, can I have some comments from council? Crickets. Ah, there we go. Councillor Masterman?
You knew you could count on me.
I knew. I was looking the rate of your eyes there.
I just, uh, uh, you know, just obviously really, uh, uh, you know, support, uh. Support of the the arts and 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 certainly, uh, uh. You know, film and and television productions have been uh being shot locally, whether it's in High River or in the region. Or in in, uh, in, you know, our direct area or or the region of southern Alberta or anywhere in Alberta for that matter. It just, uh, it 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 it's great for for our our image. It's it's economic development. It's, uh, uh, you know, certainly in High River, you know, it it also, it it definitely causes some, um. You know, some disruption in in our everyday lives, but on the other hand, I I hear very good things from, uh. From some of the neighbors downtown, uh, who are are more directly affected and and they. Um, and and perhaps Dawn would have a better thoughts on this, but but they. Uh, generally welcome, welcome the 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 crowds that come down to watch this happen. Uh, and they they welcome the uh the personnel that are that are directly involved. And, uh, I don't know, it's just, um. My wife is a huge Heartland fan and, uh, and and I find it, uh, I I I love it as well. But, um, I find it a little sappy, um, but I love watching for, um, I love watching for. For High River, um, landmarks and uh and Maggie's and and every other thing. And, uh, so it's, um, you know, it it's just, it's just wonderful, uh. Going way back to, you know, as long as we've been here, the shooting of uh of the first Superman movie here and and so. Um, anyway, I I'm huge advocate and, uh, uh, and certainly in support of this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Masterman. I like to use to call Grandpa Jack a little bit sappy, but. Any other comments from council? I I'm not sure. Kara, can you break in here? It doesn't ask us for a resolution. Is this just? We just respond to this letter or what's the what's the next action going forward on this?
So thank you so much, Deputy Kinghorn, um, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn. The question is whether council wants to put forward a resolution directing administration to authorize. Um, to sign to either some of the same letter or something similar, so that's really up for for council to provide that direction.
Okay, and coincidentally, it is Bruce or councillor Masterman's turn for a motion, so. Councillor Masterman, would you like to make a recommendation?
Yeah, and I really love thinking on the fly. Um, I, uh, no, seriously. But, um, it it, you know, I think that the part of the part of this letter, if if I read this correctly, is some concern. That the province might be cutting back on on some of the areas of support. And, uh, so, um. I probably should have penned something in advance, Deputy Mayor Kinghorn, rather than just ramble, um. But I think, um, uh, just looking at at this letter, um. That I think, you know, that the town of High River, um. Contact the Alberta government to uh to indicate it's it's ongoing in support of, uh. Of uh major film and television productions, uh, in, uh. And, you know, I I would say in High River and and Albert and other communities and throughout Alberta. Does that make any sense?
Well said, councillor Masterman. That's well said. Um, so you got that, Kara? Kara, do you have the resolution?
I did. Thank you.
Awesome. All those opposed?
Know that I can repeat it.
Uh, all those opposed? None. The resolution is carried. Thanks, councillor Masterman. Um, so that brings us to item seven, council correspondence, which is included in your packages. And I didn't see the note here in the script, but general, we asked for public comments at the end of the meeting as well. Are there any public comments?
So thank you so much for the question. So typically for these virtual ones, we've only been doing it at the front, front of the meeting, um, just because. The process is for for individuals to submit those comments ahead of time, um, and so we haven't received any additional comments.
Awesome. Thank you. So at four P M, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Night, everyone.
See you.
Good afternoon, everyone.